Good evening and welcome to a joint planning and development subcommittee town council meeting. It's Tuesday, November 25th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. We're in the Larry E. McDonald Veterans Meeting Room. Please note, it's possible a quorum of the town council may be present and discuss the agenda items, but voting rights shall be limited to subcommittee members in attendance. The items listed which may be discussed at the meeting are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by both audio and video methods. That's the call to order. Role call, Councilor Kelly?
Present.
Councilor Adams?
Present.
Citizen member La Rochelle?
Present.
Citizen member Burnetown is absent, and Chairman Daniel is here. We have four. That's a quorum. Item number three, discuss role of redevelopment authority with guest Andrew Murch, the redevelopment authority chair, to present the Urban Renewal Plan Training 101. Mr. Murch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the council and the subcommittee, for having me and letting me introduce to you what the redevelopment and the public, what the redevelopment authority does. Recently, the town council did approve our urban renewal plan major amendment, which greatly appreciated before. This is going over, this is work that has culminated to the head over the last four years. And what I'm going to be showing you tonight was a little bit of that training that we got in 2021, but also the beginnings of this major amendment. So you're kind of getting a two-for-one introduction into what the redevelopment authority can do, and how we got to the major amendment to that you guys, that the town council approved recently. So, in this slide, we're going to have an urban renewal program overview. It's going to introduce you to the redevelopment authority and the urban renewal plan that we've been using, that we, that was passed by town council back in 2011. We've been operating under that premise for quite some time, but now we're moving into the secondary stages in getting that major amendment. Moving to the next slide here. So, to get to our major amendment, we had several meetings which included additional trainings for us back in 2021. We did all of our public presentations in council chambers as a public meeting when we did this. This was shortly after COVID. We were still in the reins if we weren't having a limited number of seating for people to attend, but it was our first, it was the redevelopment authority's first meeting in council chambers, and it was our introduction to the community. The purpose of our redevelopment authority, and urban renewal more specifically, it's an economic development strategy that a town can use to encourage investment and help fill in vacancies, build commercial and residential rehab that's within an urban renewal area via allocation of funds or working with private property owners and other businesses to help, all in all, help revitalize a specific district in the community. For us to meet that initial urban renewal plan, it had to be an area that wasn't performing well economically, and we needed public sector assistance in order to attract private investment, as well as also investment into the infrastructure in the center of town for us or in a specific area. Urban renewal plans typically are enacted by redevelopment authorities, which is where we came in. We were established in 2003. We operate mostly under chapter 121B. There are different provisions in other chapters that sometimes specify redevelopment authority jurisdiction and purview. It just depends on what's applicable within that chapter, but 90% of what a redevelopment authority's provisions are and what they can do within a municipality are located in chapter 121. Currently, this is a little update, this was as of 2021. We do have Holly Cristo, Rick Clementson, myself on the chair. We recently just had Maria Torres. She was elected this past election, so she's come in, and she's been attending the meetings for well over the last year, so she's been involved in a lot of the discussions as a citizen. We commissioned that urban renewal plan in 2011, which also had some downtown design guidelines, which we will get into what has already been completed and where we're moving on from here. What can we do exactly? We can establish rehab standards. We can also participate in real estate development and investment, commercial rehabilitation. We can issue bonds, borrow money from banks, we can invest funds, we can receive grants. We have been receiving a lot of grants since I started back in 2018, and I'm sure PEG will find us more. We can accept gifts as donations, just like the town council can, and we can also negotiate and relocate with businesses specifically in that area. We also have the right to demolish a rehab. We can also purchase property. We did recently, we purchased one of the gravestone, in fact, the gravestone business that was right in between Foster and Central. That was negotiated in good faith with the property owner, and that was under the central core through the redevelopment authority. I know that others went into negotiating it. It did go to town council for approval, but that was part, just in part of some of the things that we can do and what it can be used for, because that's now a part of the party. Yes, sir?
Thank you. First of all, issuing a bond or borrowing the funds, does that have to go through the town council for ultimate approval, or is that something you can do based on whatever funds you may have? I mean, is that, who authorizes the issuing of bonds?
To the best of my knowledge, a lot of our, a lot of our actions do go through the town council for approval. I wouldn't necessarily see where we wouldn't put that forth in front of the town council, especially if the town of Southbridge is going to have a commitment. I would have to double back and verify with PEG, but I am pretty sure that we would also have the authority to issue the bonds, but we have to have the funds. So, if the redevelopment authority doesn't have a lot of money in its coffers right now, so we can't really do much.
So, for the town council decided to gift you money over, or let you vote to give the redevelopment authority funds, based on those funds, I mean, you'd ask it for issuing certain bonds and how much it would be over time?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Which, for a sub, for a committee that's not a council, there's, there's a lot more authority than would say, you would say, the conservation commission, or the agricultural commission, or economic planning, the economic planning and development commission. Though we work hand in hand with them, they don't have the same range of authority that the RDA has. Are there any other questions before I move to the next slide? So currently, we've been working out of what we call our central core. This is our current area. You can see, we go from Main Street down over to Foster. We have Central and Hamilton. Kind of cookie cuts here, comes down Hamilton, right behind Tassies, behind this area, and then we're stopping right here, right in front of Joe Capillo Park, down Worcester Street. So that was the current area that we've been working in. Obviously, the main focus is being Central Street, which a lot of investment has gone on in the last five to seven years. Main Street, the Hamilton Hook Street area also, and just, again, small segments of Worcester Street. The Grand Trunk Rail Line and the Quinnipah River do run through in small portion in our area. The rail trail obviously comes through the center of town, right in front of the registry, which we have right here. So, some of the types of recommendations that were in the initial plan, pretty clear, cut and dry, you know, parcel acquisitions that we can rehab demo or aggregate to form a larger parcel that could potentially be more marketable for private investment, infrastructure and utility upgrades, roadway and traffic and pedestrian safety improvements, streetscape enhancements, and also investment in open public spaces, such as the Central Street parking lot, which, and we have, a lot of work has gone on there, and we've had some events since this has been done too, the concerts on Central, so that way we can utilize that public space and try to bring people into the economic center of town. A little bit of a rougher diagram, this was initially the game plan back in 2011. You know, we had the waterfront park that was going to go up behind Tassies, the rail trail, which has finished, for the most part, in the center of town. The Trailhead Park, Dead End and Hook, well, the initial plan was to Dead End Hook Street, that has changed, as well as the intersection between Hamilton and La Rochelle. We're now doing a peanut rotary here, even though La Rochelle is going to go over. A lot of this has already been either in, has already been completed or is in development. Leave the next slide. Yeah, what has been accomplished. We have, the Central Street parking lot has been completely upgraded. We do have the public utility improvements along Main Street. Melo Tigler is apparently still going to go into that building. At the time, it was fresh. There's a car on the top of the roof, that's all I can really tell you.
I believe there's an agreement already signed by the council last year. Yeah, but it's not moving.
And we also have the funding for the tip project, the Hamilton Hook La Rochelle Interchange and that peanut rotary. That's also starting, I believe, next year or this year?
Next year.
Yeah, next year. So, the plaza has been completed. These are designed and funded, and as you can see here, the adjustment was we were doing the peanut rotary, so that can redirect traffic down Hamilton towards La Rochelle. This is also going to connect over to North Street, or, excuse me, Foster Street, and we're disconnecting the North Street to Hook to Worcester Street intersection. That's just going to be cordoned off and is just going to turn into parking, which will make for a lot safer traffic flow through here. Same thing going through Hamilton and Hook, becoming a one-way. That Hamilton-La Rochelle interchange is also going to have smoother and safer traffic flow, and allows for more pedestrian flow also.
Are they still putting the light over there on Foster?
As far as I'm aware. I have heard of some changes.
Okay.
That, that site, that retail rehabilitation, for the most part, has been completed. Obviously, the private investment and the parking lot still needs to be done. So we've, within our, you can see, this blue outline is our original core, and you can see that as far as the public space and open spaces, we've done practically everything. There's a lot of private investment, and there's more details. We do have our urban renewal plan on the town's website. It's a good 200-page thick book, so if you are interested, I would definitely encourage you to look at that. That is going to change with the major amendment, and once that major amendment is approved and we get the environment study, obviously, we'll be sharing that with the council.
Quick question.
Yes?
You said Hook Street's going to be one-way?
Yep. So it's going to be one-way going up to Hamilton Street, so that no more traffic's going to be pulling out here.
Right.
This is a blind corner, which is very dangerous for both pedestrians and oncoming traffic, so by one-waying that, this, it definitely is going to reduce the amount of accidents or potential injuries in that area.
And there's going to be a rotary on Hamilton?
Yep. So you can see this little weird nugget of green, that's going to be the, that's just going to be the center of the rotary. It's kind of, I don't know if you've been out towards Polar Park, but that rotary when you're coming off of the highway, going towards Canal Street and Worcester, it's going to have a couple of waves in the middle, but it's going to be able to safely divert the traffic where they need to go. That also, there was a little, we had to work around some of the private property and redesign this from its initial investment, and also with the addition of a traffic study that was performed after 2011. This was the safer and best and most economic option to be able to go with.
Where are you putting the monument?
So, I can answer that. That's going to go to DPW, and the state's going to pay for that, and then it's going ultimately to Dresser, which we already have a spot. Once we start digging, it's going right up to the very top.
I know that was an issue.
Yeah, not anymore. So, so Hook Street is turning into a one-way going towards town.
Correct.
Okay. So that would, so is Hamilton Street going to turn into a one-way into, into Main Street?
Nope. One-way is going to stop right at the end of Hook, and then you just have one-way traffic flow through a rotary.
Well, I mean, I would love to see both of those, both Hamilton and Central Street one-way streets.
I don't disagree with you.
It, I mean, Hamilton, Central Street, we've done a lot on Central Street as far as business development, but quite honestly, traffic flow down there, with cars parked on the side of the road, it's, you know, you got a truck, you got a 18-wheeler that goes down that street, you can't get by.
Right.
It forces the street to become a one-way, at least temporarily, until that truck passes. I mean, it's just, something needs to be done with Central Street. And I think it makes sense that one street flows into Main Street, the other street flows away from Main Street, but if Hook Street's turning into a one-way towards Main Street, would make sense to make Hamilton Street a one-way that flows into Main Street and Central Street, a one-way that flows out.
That's definitely, you know, those are definitely projects we can work together with the town council and the redevelopment authority can work together with in the future. As far as what was approved for the, this particular project, it was just, it was just rerouting and aligning, relining traffic for La Rochelle, creating a safer, an actual intersection between, or street between Central and Foster Street, because there was no back way to connect through there. You would have to just deal with the flow traffic on Main Street, or, I called him a little off-road when the memorial company was there, he had to drive down Derrick Road to cross over. Yes, sir?
I don't know if Katie can answer the question, or PEG, but I believe, you know, we had discussion about making Central Street one-way going down, and Hamilton Street coming to Cumberland Farm as, as one-way. Part of the discussion was the light at the corner of Central Street and La Rochelle Way, that there would be, have to be no configuration done under the pleasant, the pleasant plan. So I think that discussion might have been in the Main Street potential study that's going on now, who we applied for. There's been some discussion.
I mean, I remember having discussions.
Not to be off the subject, I know you're, we're long, but Central Street, first of all, there's no 18-wheelers that are supposed to even go down there towards Main Street. There's a sign up there by Knights that states it, but very small, but we still see the 18-wheelers. I think the intent was from the council, because you got, if you look right, probably where that orange corner of Hamilton's at right there, and then where Central has that little green line right to Central, I think that's, that is grant money that's going to be applied for to finish those two areas over there. And I think the council, before I left, the intent was to, I believe PEG and K, I know, that it was going to go one-way, one-side parking on Hamilton, going, going pretty much northbound on Central, and then going southbound on Hamilton, same thing.
Right, that's what, okay. Yeah, because I believe that, I believe expanded sidewalks was also within the topic of our conversation, so.
Correct, yeah.
We actually, we just discussed this, I think it was either last month's meeting or the month before, we had to come up in a discussion. But yeah, so there's, as long, the redevelopment authority can continue to work on the infrastructure and roadways within that core area, and I'd love to be able to work with the town council, continue moving forward. Obviously, a traffic study, when it's done, is already kind of halfway outdated, but, you know, we can use the most modern information, the most modern accurate information that we have, and definitely work together and move forward. And there's plenty of, there's still plenty of things to do within the central part of town. I know we have an open space somewhere in this area on Main Street, that we're trying to work with a private owner to make sure that gets built.
In that corner.
Yep. So we're definitely, we're on track to cover a lot of ground, and I would say, just a ballpark estimate, a lot of the private investment as far as commercial rehabilitation or residential rehabilitation's been situational based on the property owner, whether or not they've applied. We have had, for example, we've done commercial rehabilitation to signs as far as for businesses. That has been well utilized. I believe you guys just actually went through a wave of approvals. So that, that funding and outlet has gone through the redevelopment authority when we discussed the CDBG funds. That has been also a focal point for us, is updating signage and making sure that it still stays within the historic aesthetic of the center of town, but making sure we can modernize and bring the 18th and 19th century into the 21st. Do, so far, as far as public investment, we have had our road safety audit. We did that in 2020, 2021 through CDBG funds. The Central Street parking lot, we actually, the original budget was 1.3. We were able to, for the Central Street parking lot alone, we came in under budget enough to where the redevelopment authority also approved going and doing the Hamilton alleys back behind there with the dumpsters and everything, and that paved brick walkway you have, coming right by Dynasty, coming down into the Central Street parking lot behind that alleyway. We also, the 4.3 million in state tip funding for the construction of the Hamilton Hook La Rochelle roadways, the town was contributing 400,000, and then we, I believe it was 2019 to 2022, we had Main Street infrastructure investment, including almost 600,000 from CDBG, and the Central Street property with the mural has had a lot of private investment. And of course, you can tell, since this was done in 2021, over the last four years, we've had a lot of private investment. Taqueria de San Juanaba opened up their brick and mortar store. At this point, Central still hadn't reopened. Central then reopened, rebranded, and Honest Town Eats was able to open up since then. So, since this presentation has been done, even a lot more of that private investment has been made, which means that the public investment we're making into revitalizing this space is working. We still have some vacant storefronts. We still have some buildings, commercial buildings that aren't up to code, and we're still working on the creating the jobs in town, the town council. I have seen, has tried to work as diligently as it can to try to attract private investment, and I'm sure we're not going to stop on that until we're all filled up. This was future as of 2021, but we have completed the rail trail. We're still looking into ways for the Riverwalk Park that was in the original urban renewal plan, that is going to require an up-to-date environmental study on it. Still working to fill storefronts and upper floors and create more public open space. And you can see, here's a brief overview from, you know, what that earlier slide, all these in purple have been, are either built or in progress. And then, the redevelopment authority had, had proposals of acquisitions for properties in its original urban renewal plan, which included this entire building and the Los Urbanos Spanish Grocery Store that's right there on Central Street, as well as the little pink house right there at the corner of Hook and Hamilton. A lot of this has been privately invested into, so the redevelopment authority has kind of divvied away from acquiring those properties as there's been private investment, and that's exactly what we want. We don't want the town to have to make, you know, we don't, the redevelopment authority in a perfect world, we don't want to have to take, purchase a building or be gifted a parcel of property to completely redevelop it or rebuild it and then put it out for sale. You know, obviously, commercial real estate does take a little bit longer to flip, and that's an investment that doesn't necessarily cause an immediate return. So, when we can see that public funding turn into private investment into parcels that we were to acquire, that we are no longer, we've decided against because investment's been made, it only shows the strength of what the redevelopment authority, what the town as a whole has done to invest in its infrastructure to garner that private investment. And we've been highlighted, no longer needed to purchase. We did all this through a grant. We did this all through a grant that we got as part of the initial wave of COVID funding. This slide, working with BSC Group and performing the studies through 2021. We got those funds to be able to put trainings like this together and also work on doing our major urban renewal amendment. At the end of the day, our goals were, you know, when we set out, is what, what is the redevelopment authority going to do with these additional funds? It was to make sure we could bolster our economic development, especially after COVID, try to educate the community as a whole, which is why we did these training sessions as a public meeting in council chambers, so that way, any citizen in the public could attend. It was also broadcasted live through Southbridge Community Television those evenings. We did get some attendance, but again, at that time, it was kind of hard to get people out from after COVID. This was in the hopes of developing a consensus for our actions and priorities moving forward, and tried to, it was also used in this assessment to figure out what we've done, what we still need to do, and what can we do to improve it, to continue to work to improve Southbridge as a whole, and where we can expand our area to work in. The Southbridge Redevelopment Authority is still committed to these goals as far as addressing vacancies and targeting that investment to projects and parcels that need the attention. Obviously, that's all in the hopes to attract employers and jobs and improve the quality of life for residents of Southbridge. PEG, who's a godsend to the community as a whole, but definitely, I could say, over the last six years with us, or five years with the redevelopment authority, has always kept us engaged with our federal partners and state and local organizations. We've been, more recently, in better contact with the Southbridge Business Partnership. Moreover, we're kind of working on, for example, we're currently trying to work with Southbridge Business Partnership and other members of the community and organizations like the Southbridge Garden Club to try to fill the urns next year that are in the center of town with flowers. And, because they used to be filled, it looked great, it's kind of, it's been a couple of years since they've had flowers in them, so it makes, especially in the summertime when everything's blooming beautifully, it makes the center of downtown very attractive to walk through, which hopefully stunned buddy stops by Dynasty or Central to grab a bite to eat and enjoy and smell the flowers while they can hang out in the Central Street Plaza, where we have tables and chairs for you to sit down and enjoy your food. And we've continued to work with various state agencies to make sure that we can work and get as much grants as possible. Same thing with federal agencies. We've, we have committed to working with our minority, the minorities in our community, so that way we can make sure that everybody's included in the process, and we also reflect with our investments the different cultures and personalities that we have within the town, because we are a melting pot of a community as a whole, so the investment should be geared as such, and I believe, since 2021 and continuing to move forward, I think we're in the right track and exact, doing what the redevelopment authority has sought out to do. Some examples, Hudson, I actually, I work not far from here. The downtown Hudson is always populated with either cars or people walking on the sidewalks. Their redevelopment authority made a lot of the investment, including in this rotary in this picture, that was all done by them, the expanded sidewalks and the open seating outside for restaurants. They had already, Hudson's redevelopment authority had coordinated all of that, as that was their urban renewal area. And you can see outdoor seating, very similar to what Central has, just on a larger scale. That is also a restaurant in Hudson, and Hudson's local economy has been quite successful in seeing growth over the last four years, as, which is reflective of the investment that their redevelopment authority has made. Another community, you can see, have open, developed open seating, expanded sidewalks, and bringing in private investment, which is Wakefield, Rhode Island. Rhode Island does have a lot of the same access for redevelopment authorities. They do, they operate in similar fashion to what we have here in Massachusetts. They also have their green space and their waterfront park. And again, Wakefield, Rhode Island is a well-touristed town in the summertime, and that was what they tried to gear their investment towards, and they've also seen growth. At the time, we were looking for a potential slogan for our reinvestment. If I'm being honest, that did kind of fizzle out, but we did end up, we put up a Survey Monkey survey throughout the community. We kept it up for 30 days. All members shared it via social media. We did have the Focus on Southbridge, Southbridge First, they were sharing that survey also throughout the month, so we did get, we got about 150 responses, which is honestly a little more than I had expected, but the, those that voted landed on Eye of the Commonwealth, Eye of the Future. For the Central Street, the concerts on Central, we did have that Eyes of the Commonwealth, Eye of the Future banner. Unfortunately, that did get taken out by one of those storms in its very first year, did not make it. It was, so, but we are still committed to, as we continue to invest, looking for opportunities to capitalize on that slogan as we move forward. Jeff Fasser was still working, we were still working with as far as the urban major amendment, and PEG is obviously our go-to in Economic Planning and Development Department. But this was just the first one. There are two more slides, two more presentations that I'll email to you guys so that you can review them. I do hope to potentially present them in a future date at another planning and development meeting. That way, we can also establish and develop a good relationship, and the community gets an opportunity to view this meeting through various international also. So, are there any additional questions that anybody might have? Yes, sir?
Andrew, thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. So, first of all, what are we doing about the vacancies down here, especially on here, especially on Main Street, and also on Hamilton and Central? There are a couple, there are a bunch of buildings down there that really, I don't think that the owners have put any investment in. I've looked many of the owners up, they all seem to be these out-of-state LLCs. You know, in particular, this building here at the corner of Elm and Main Street, 287 Main Street, where it was always used to be, I think that building is completely vacant now.
Yes.
And, you know, looking at it from the outside, you know, I look at the windows, and it looks like, I mean, it looks like it's a fire trap at this point. It looks, it looks like it needs a lot of work. The owner is not doing anything to invest in it. They drove Zoey's out of there because they tried to raise the rent on them. And, you know, there's another building, of course, we've got the vacant lot, which I think is what, 310 Main Street?
Yep.
And then you've got 320 Main Street, which there is something in there, I think, but but that building isn't, it doesn't look like there's been any investment in that as well. There's just a lot of buildings down there that I think are owned by these, you know, out-of-town LLCs, out-of-state LLCs, that really have no interest in the buildings, they're just holding them for, I don't know, tax write-offs, I'm not sure why they're holding them, but they're certainly not investing in them. What are we doing as redevelopment authority, as a town, to get those buildings moved into, back into the commerce world? They're just sitting there vacant. I mean, some of them probably could be turned into upstairs apartments, or it could be office space, but I just, you know, but there's nothing going on in many of the buildings downtown.
So as part of our major amendment, we are adding additional parcels for acquisition, that actually being one of them, 310, where Zoey's used to be, that building is also on our radar, and is going to be part of our urban major amendment, because it's been vacant. And again, it is also owned by an out-of-state LLC. That, the redevelopment authority is committed to working with the Economic Planning, the Economic Development Commission, which I believe actually has a quorum for the first time in quite some time. So we're actually going to sit down and have a meeting. A lot of it goes, which what the redevelopment authority has discussed, and also is part of our major amendment, is to have a focus on marketing for private investment. Right now, the town of Southbridge, as far as, does not have a great marketing strategy for itself and some of these vacant properties. Not that we don't have one, it's just that we have a lot of vacant commercial properties that need that investment, and we need to have a marketing strategy that's focused on those buildings once the town acquires them, if the town can. The redevelopment authority can purchase those funds privately, or purchase those buildings privately, if we have the funds. We don't have a lot of funds of our own. But if a redevelopment authority had a rolling, had a rolling, had rolling coffers, and we had the money, we could purchase the building from the owners and make that investment without necessarily going through the same rules of procurement that necessarily the town council is constrained by. We can just act as purchasers, and we could, we could essentially purchase that property from the current owner, make the investment to rehab it, and then we can decide, do we want to be landlords, or do we want to sell it? A lot of that is the reason why we've put some additional properties in for acquisition, and potentially working with the town council for seed money, so we can try to work our way up to have those financial capabilities to be able to purchase some of these blighted commercial properties and make that reinvestment. So it's on our radar, we, it's been part of the discussion for that amendment, and that's our game plan.
Thank you. I have one more question. You know, you showed some pictures here of Hudson in particular, Rhode Island, that have done some very good work in this area. I also note that Hutten, which is not too far away from here, has redeveloped their downtown pretty significantly as well. You know, Hudson has the advantage of being off of 495, and has now become a, you know, a suburb of Boston essentially. So they, they, they benefit from the higher, you know, high housing prices in the Boston metro area, pushing people out of the metro into places like Hudson. So that's one thing that they have benefited from, which is a little better, which is an advantage. But I'm wondering if we have been consulting with these communities that have successfully redeveloped in downtown, to see what they've done, what strategies they've used in order to be successful?
Yes, we have. There, we've also, so Hudson's one of, we have communicated with Hudson on multiple occasions, reaching out to see what they did. Obviously, we kind of have to tweak it to our own personality, but we have reached out to them, we've also reached out to Pittsburgh. We've got, we've looked at some examples of what Worcester had done before the big Polar Park investment. So we've, and a few other municipalities, I can't think of off the top of my head, but we've, we've made sure that over the course of this urban renewal plan major amendment, that we've looked at all possible examples to try to get as much perspective as possible as to what we could potentially do moving forward with that amendment. So I can say that one thing that I did see after speaking with Hudson, what they, they do have a good relationship with the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce, so that also does help with as far as networking for private investment. So that did help them in their travels. I know the redevelopment authority doesn't really have a working relationship with the COC as of yet, we're, we're trying to work on getting that relationship queued up, we're just also more focused on really developing the relationship with the Southbridge Business Partnership, hometown first, then we can start branching out later. But yeah, we definitely want to try to work with our local partners first, before we start branching out to a collective of other communities within the area. We want to, you know, the people that live here know what they want, so we want to focus there.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Do you know if the movie theater or the theater is still above Zoey's, is it still intact?
I have heard about this movie theater, I'm not 100% sure, I've heard both ways, I haven't been there myself. As far as I'm aware, it's, I'm leaning more towards it's probably not, given I do believe at one point there was occupancy upstairs, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. And I know that when I was on redevelopment, we did have, Hutten came down, was down at the, they came down and did a whole speech to help us with the redevelopment thing at that time. They did come down, I remember that. And the other thing, could you just do me a favor, on La Rochelle, could you make that a capital L?
We'll get that fixed.
Thank you.
No, no worries.
Can I just, so there was another town that we went to when I was on the redevelopment authority that really caught my eye, I forgot the name, but I think PEG was just hired on, Rose, Rosemary, set that whole meeting up where the redevelopment authority took an old theater, because they already had, they started with funds, but the town had given more, they gifted it, and then they redeveloped it, and then they sold it off, and then they had their own bank account, which they can purchase properties from. And that was one of the biggest things I took away from it, we never have done that. I see a lot more interest now in the redevelopment authority than I've probably ever seen since I've been in the municipality government here in town. You know, us being able to give a building like, if it's tax title, or it's eminent, ultimately eminent domain, and I tried to reach out to the owners twice over there, and no responses at all. So that to me means they don't want to deal business with us, and that, that case, you guys have the authority to have an eminent domain of a piece of property, and then town could possibly gift you money to redevelop it, well, obviously, there has to be a plan of attack for it. And that's where you end up having the funds to be able to purchase the next building down if possible, or the next lot down the road, it's just a start off. And I just think that the council, and it doesn't matter if it's this council or last year, 10 years ago, was never aggressive enough to give those funds over to the redevelopment authority, or maybe the redevelopment authority was not prepared to do any of that stuff as work as well, more so than what you guys are doing now. So I think this is where, what building is it that you want, and we start working on that, where the council try to work together to either gift it to you, or provide some type of free cash to help you guys out with it, whatever, maybe, that way you guys continue to move on, because you can get your own grants at that point in time, and you have that authority that we, we have, and you have a little bit more. But another thing is, the governor's appointee, has that not been filled?
So, no. So Maria had originally applied for that, we had sent it to the governor's office, there have been several follow-ups, quite frankly, and to our benefit, Maria just got a patient and ran for office. And Arthur Martin decided to step back, he wasn't going to run for reelection, but we are still open on that governor appointee spot.
So do you, if you have anybody, this is what I'd say, if you have anybody, if they're listening out there, they do it, you know, we call our representatives and our state senator, I don't think that's been done, maybe it has been done, to really push this along, because it's such an important appointee, that, you know, they have the ear of that area, that hopefully will help out. So if you have anybody, just shoot a text and say, here's, here's their application, because, I mean, it's not doing us any good staying vacant, and for Maria not to be able to get into that position because it took so long, then maybe, then the town council will help with their representatives, push that along into the governor's office, and have a conversation about it. The other thing to see, I understand, you know, a big supporter, but you talked about the minorities within the town itself, and the Latinx, and the African-Americans, and trying to get all that stuff together. What, it looks great on a PowerPoint, what has been done though? Has, have we had nonprofits come in and talk to you and say, this is how we can do it? Or is it great ideas, because we're still not getting that, you know, that 40% of our population involved where it needs to be to help change our, our community to where it needs to be? So my question is, what, what's the plan? Instead of just going on a PowerPoint, it's not slam on you guys or redevelopment, I'm sure somebody came in and said, hey, let's conclude this, but what's the plan? How do we get the individuals out there that we continue to say, hey, we need to get them involved, how are we doing that?
If I'm being honest, you know, part of what we did, the same year we did the Center, the Concerts on Central, we, the year after, we did the mural. The mural was done by a mass, a mass native Latin artist, which mural came out great. We, the redevelopment authority, we kind of narrowed it down, we knew what we wanted as far as a look goes, we had reached out to different blocks of the community, as far as what they were, what they wanted to see if it were to be changed. We did get a lot of just paint, just rebuff up the new one, that was most of the responses, but we've, we reached out to a couple of different organizations within the community that do a lot of their, their work and their community service with the Latin community within town. The problem that we're having is, I think, the problem that most municipalities are having, even for potentially this body, is just community participation. We can set these up, we set up paintings and sit down and discuss with the RDA, I've spent four hours outside, painting an absolutely terrible picture, being willing and ready and able to meet with, you know, different members of the community, and we had minimal participation.
One thing, one thing that we see in SVP is there is now becoming a mix, right? So you have more shop owners that are African-American, or Hispanic, or whatever it may be, we're starting to see that trend go in that direction, which is a good thing for the town, because they're bringing economic growth to these smaller brick and mortar stores. But I, you know, how we went about doing it was, I think it's just having a conversation with quite a few, we find out there's a business, and that's where SVP has to do a better job as well, getting back into the community of some of these, we just had a bunch of, we had multiple places open up, and not one ribbon cutting, not being, being part of the community. It's great to have a website and social media page in Autumn Fest, but my question to them, because I'm on the board, was what else are we doing after Autumn Fest? What's the process? Now, we're starting to look at writing grants, or loans, or whatever it may be within it, but has to be involved with the economic development team downstairs, which I think that lacked for a little bit too as well. So we got to do our part as well, but we want to partner with you as much as we can. But just asking those questions, because they're hard questions, and, you know, what are we doing to fix these constant problems we have? So, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? George? I appreciate, I appreciate you guys giving me the time to kind of overview a little bit of what the redevelopment authority does, and I hope to be a frequent flyer here, and we develop a relationship and make it grow, help Southbridge grow as a whole, because it's just a beneficial, a mutual working relationship between the redevelopment authority and the town council is only going to help us as a community. So thank you very much. I'm going to just close this, because I'm not sure, last time I messed it up, and Kate had to kind of fix it, so.
Thank you, Andrew.
No, not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. It's nice to meet you.
Yeah.
It's happy to meet you.
It's usually upstairs.
It is.
Looks like I'm going to go out on my own, right?
I'm sure.
Is that working?
It's going to be on, but you can.
There we go. Yay.
Again, thank you, Andrew, for the wonderful presentation, and you're right, the closer that the council works with the redevelopment authority, the better off the town will be. Okay, item number four, discuss potential development of Southbridge Affordable Housing Trust, and consider whether to recommend town council apply for the Massachusetts Housing Partnership Affordable Housing Trust Fund Initiative Intensive Technical Assistance Program. And at this point, I don't think we need a memo, we're going to, a motion we're going to discuss first, and then if it's appropriate, we can bring up an agenda item at that point, a motion at that point. Okay.
Yeah, so this was actually a recommendation that came out of the Housing Production Plan. We weren't necessarily planning on acting on it this quickly, but this opportunity came up with the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, so we thought it'd be worth our time to apply to get some professional guidance on if Southbridge is a good fit, and what, what Southbridge would need to do if they wanted to have a housing trust. So I discussed this a little bit in the presentation on the Housing Production Plan, but housing trusts are just a tool for local governments, or they could also work in the nonprofit sector. But the goal is to acquire, develop, manage, preserve housing, especially for low and moderate income individuals and families, and it gives local governments a little bit more local control on what kind of housing they want that to be, and whether that's like the size, or whether that's the demographics, if they want to target senior housing or veterans housing.
I have no idea. Excuse me. I have no idea what that is.
Everybody knows I listen to Irish music.
Yeah.
Turn a car case.
He sounds like Kelly.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so I think we, we have some questions about what would actually work best for Southbridge, but that would sort of be the point of getting technical assistance, we could have professionals give their opinion on, like, what funding mechanisms would work best for Southbridge, what kind, like, what we would expect out of an oversight board, whether, whether the town would want to take it on as a public entity, or make it more of a nonprofit that they supported separately. I can answer any other questions about.
Okay, I'll start first. All right, so if, if we apply for this grant, I assume it is a grant?
No, so there's not actually any funding involved, it's only like staff technical assistant hours from MHP.
Is there, is there, is there a monetary cost to the town?
No.
So it's all them helping us out?
Yes.
Okay. And it would, there's no commitment going down the road on the part of the town for asking for their help?
No, not beyond staff hours, that we would be meeting with them and discussing it.
Okay, so they could come in, they put Okay, so they could come in, they could inform us about affordable housing trusts and community land trusts, and tell us how it would work in Southbridge, how we would best facilitate it to work, and then, once we've got that information, we can then make a decision, yeah, it's something worthwhile, we can move forward, or no, it's not for us, we're done with it.
Yes, I believe that's the intention of the program.
So there's, again, to reemphasize, there's no commitment on our part down the road to, you know, if we don't get involved with them, they're not going to say, yes, you have to form a trust. It's going to be just, this is, we're giving you the information and you can do with it as you need to make a good decision on your own for your community.
Yeah, and I mean, so obviously they have, like, a vested interest in supporting housing trusts, so I'm sure they would love to see a housing trust in Southbridge, but I don't think that they're obligating the town that they must comply and have a housing trust if we go through the process, and there's a lot of hurdles that the town thinks that they don't want to go through.
Okay. Okay. Really? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, we're just really looking at whether or not we want basically somebody come and assist us to decide whether or not we want an affordable housing trust. We're not actually going to establish it, we're not looking to establish one now, right?
Not at this point.
Okay. I don't know if you can answer some of these questions that I would have about this in the long run if we were to, but do you know any, what the rules are surrounding, and the rules and regulations surrounding these affordable housing trusts? I really want to know basically what, how our hands are going to be shackled in the future if we were to establish something like this. And if we had you funding housing out of this town's trust, would we be able to, you, like, focus on Southbridge residents, or do we have to just, building housing for Southbridge residents, or are we going to have to open it up to the surrounding communities as well, and they're going to basically not go through something like this, and then their populations will be moving into our town as a result? I mean, I'm not even sure what, if we don't know these rules, whether or not we should even start going down the road. I mean, is this something where we could say, look, we want to focus on elderly housing with this, or veterans housing and confine it to our people? Because we have a significant problem with elderly people in town right now, which I would love to help them with. But at the same time, if it's going to be a project we have to, you know, build, and then everybody in the surrounding area gets to jump in on it without us being able to prioritize Southbridge residents, I wouldn't, I mean, I'm not sure I'd want to even go down the road looking into it. I'm looking at, I want to know, I want to help people in Southbridge. Primarily, I want to help the elderly folks, which we have a current crisis on, and secondarily, the veterans, which, and then, and then other people in town as well. I don't want to, I don't want people coming in from Charlestown, Dudley and Webster taking advantage of the program that we established. I want to be able to provide, be able to prioritize Southbridge people. So is this, is this something we would be able to do with a program like this?
Yeah, the intention is for it to be locally managed and have local goals. Maybe it's helpful, think about it, it's, as a public or quasi-public developer, it's a developer with the town's interests in mind, and the projects that, if it became an entity, they would be determining, the trust would be determining its goals, there would be a board that would include local government, local residents, hopefully, like, landowners and tenants, and would be deciding if, like, if priorities are a senior housing development, or if there's like programs for rehabbing three-deckers, or whatever, whatever is determined by the local developer as their priorities, that's what they would serve.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear, and I'm not sure I am being clear. My concern is what we're not reading in these documents, okay? We go down this road and all of a sudden we start building housing, build a trust, and then the state uncovers. Well, by the way, because of our state regulations, you have to, you cannot prioritize Southbridge residents in any way. People go on, you know, people, people could, it's first come, first served from, throughout, throughout the entire region. And my experience with these, with a lot of these housing issue, housing programs, is that when, that communities are not allowed to discriminate based on their own residents. And that's my concern, is this something that we would be able to prioritize our own residents on, and particularly specific populations within, within our town, namely the elderly and the over sixty-fives and the veterans? Or are we going to be forced to just establish this program and then accept anybody who wants to apply?
So, again, I think that really depends on the kind of programs that would be run. I think if, if you're talking about voucher programs, that might be the case where you're dealing with a little more, it can be filled with anyone with a voucher. But if you're, if you're talking more about redevelopment of existing, like, owner-occupied buildings, or like, small-scale, like, development, it might be easier to gear that towards current Southbridge residents. But I guess that's sort of a hard question to answer overall at this point, and maybe that's something that the technical assistants can answer the questions for too, because we also can't predict how the state is going to change their regulations and what they're going to require. But they don't currently require housing authorities to, like, to have a certain type of development. That's, there's a wide range of what housing authorities can choose to implement in their programs.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the counselor's question on it. I can, I can understand what you're saying if it comes to any type of vouchers, because that's either federally or statewide funded, so you can't limit that. But I just popped up a couple of things that I asked about it. This is, the trust can give preference to residents of the town, right? Just like you could give preference to veterans or sixty-five and older, you could do that. I just don't know how far that goes at the end of the day, because sooner or later, maybe you run out of that type of population that's local, and then what do you do with all this housing? And you stick it to the way for Southbridge residents that may or may not be able to afford it anyway. I'm not really sure if we can just stop the floodgates coming from other towns, but I think there could be the first come, first served, which would be setting goals and guidelines if we didn't take any type of, it was, maybe there's a private, private or not-for-profit who funded, helped fund the trust and say, okay, we'll keep it, first preferences, Southbridge residents, at this amount of money that they can afford or their household income, and then he goes to maybe seniors or veterans or something like that, and then hopefully it fills up the vacancies. I can see that happen. I'm just not sure if it's gonna, but it's a good question to ask. I think that'd be something that I'd like to kind of be answered. I think I know the answer, but I think it needs to be, you know, I mean, here, there's a difference between setting allowable criteria, income thresholds, local residency, preference, et cetera. And by all means, I know this isn't like the end-all, what I just pulled up, right? So, excluding specific categories of households after that, which is only families, no children, only veterans, must work in town. The latter is either violates discrimination laws, well, it violates discrimination laws. So I'm not sure, we couldn't just stop them coming in, but maybe you could slow it down by saying, residents of Southbridge first, you have to prove residency that you're here now. I don't know, but I think it's a good question to ask. That's all I got, thank you, I'm sorry.
So they would be coming in and doing a presentation?
So, we're applying to MHP. If we're accepted, they would have staff people that would come help us, like, review what we currently have in Southbridge, our new housing plan, our current status of housing, and they'd give us input on what they think the best. If we were to have a housing trust, like, how would we fund it? How would we structure it? Who should be involved? They're just giving us guidance. There would probably be presentations involved at some point, but it would be, it would be a year-long process that they'd be working with the town.
Because I feel there's a lot of questions that need to be answered that, obviously, you really can't answer at this point in time, but if they were to come in and sit down with the council, I think the questions could be asked then. I just, I can't see, I don't know, you're going to put in for this. If we get it, does that mean that we have to take it? I mean, I guess.
No, like I say, we're not required to start a housing trust after getting this technical assistance. They're just here to guide us in how we would do it, if we choose to do it.
I'm also thinking.
So how many hours do we have with them? And how many hours is it going to cost us for that?
So, it doesn't cost us anything.
I mean, as far as hours are concerned.
It's a, it's a ten-month program, and I think there's maybe like a meeting a month, is my understanding. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know specifically.
No, that's okay. It's a question, maybe, I didn't understand why, because it's something that, you know, just for understanding, like CMRPC, if you show up for meetings and you have people that are assigned, we get hours for that, and then that's how we get technical assistance from CMRPC or CMPO or whoever may be in charge. So I just wondered how much we had with them, and then how much assistance could we have without hurting somebody else? Lastly, this is technical assistance, you made it very clear, we're not obligated at the end of the day to do this, but it's something that maybe, this is where our answers, the answers to our questions are going to come from too, from the experts, and suppose that experts will come through, so I wouldn't see a problem with taking this to the council just for a vote, up or down, to get technical assistance. It's not costing us any financial obligation at this point.
Counselor?
So if I understand this, what you're asking for is to apply to the state for technical assistance to determine where we want to go? Whether we want to form housing trust, how we're going to form that housing trust, the parameters of that trust, is that good?
Yeah, and so they, they're not the state. Mass Housing Partnership is a separate nonprofit that focuses on housing issues.
So, and then the final outcome would be determined by council, say? If we wanted to continue and move forward, or no, it's not working for us, this is where it ends?
Yes, the council would decide if you wanted to go forward with a housing trust. Yeah.
All right, I, I agree with everyone's concerns. However, I think it's become, to me, it's become apparent that we need to go to a higher authority to get the questions answered, and to get to that higher authority, it sounds like we need to apply for this technical assistance. And I think, I would say that if we were to bring it to the council, there'd have to be a caveat that says that perhaps you or Peg checks with them before you go to the, to the work of applying for the assistance, that it does not obligate us to any further action in the future, that we're taking the assistance for just that, assistance in helping us to make decisions. If they say that there's an obligation on the part of the town, then I would say we're done, because we're not going to, we're not going to, I would not be for obligating the town to anything before we know we're obligating. And that's the, that's the thing here. We've got a lot of very good questions that I'm sure the other counselors have as well. There's four of us here, there's another five, that I'm sure would be thinking the same thing. So, I, I don't have a problem bringing it to the council for a yes or no, but I would, I would want to make sure that, you know, before Monday's meeting, perhaps, Monday night, you're able to tell us whether or not there is an obligation or not, you know? Sometimes the free lunch isn't free. So, you know, we want to be sure about that. Counselor?
Maybe just one other question. This doesn't, this is for public partnerships, not so much private entities. So a private developer like Whitewater Strategies that came in, wanted to buy up the Whiter Building, they could still come in and do what they wanted to do, but if somebody wanted to come in and build a housing project, they wanted the partnership with the community, that housing trust would be for that, correct?
Yes, that's correct. It would be either a public or a quasi-public nonprofit, that would be with the town's interest in mind.
Right, so private developers could still come in, do what they did at Leavenhill Housing, and raise the rents and do that kind of stuff, and this, if they're not, if they're not in partnership with the housing trust or the entity that might come about, they could still do what they wanted to do?
Yeah, but I guess I would say, maybe a potential benefit of having an organization like a housing trust is that in a case where a private developer was coming in, you'd have an alternative that could invest and with the community in mind.
Correct. Okay.
I think I know the, Mr. Chair, through you, I think I know the answer. I mean, it's at the very bottom of the memo, I mean, it's about the technical assistance. There's really, it doesn't say where it's no obligation, it's technical assistance. We get technical assistance all the time through our hours through CMRPC. It doesn't obligate us to anything at all. So, we get the, I made it very clear, would be to answer the questions that specifically pertain to our town, Southbridge. So, I mean, I don't think, I'm very comfortable bringing this up and making a motion to move forward with this at the town council meeting on Monday night. Through you, would you like me to make a motion? I can at least make a motion then, but the members. Make a motion to potentially develop, boy, you don't have this written out yet. Let's see.
Well, you can just take the second sentence. You make a motion to recommend town council apply for the Massachusetts Housing Partnership Affordable Grant.
Yeah, I tried to say technical assistance.
And I don't, do we need to allow the town manager?
I decided I need paperwork, because I think it's a requirement.
Right, so the motion starts with, make a motion to, that second sentence there.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, we already have a motion, don't we?
All right. All right, let's give it a second here for the town manager to put it together.
I got it, I think, town council, right? It's already been submitted. It's on my calendar. At least I'm not playing Irish music.
Therapist.
Okay.
Yeah, recommend for the town council to approve applying for the Massachusetts Housing Partnership Affordable Housing Trust Fund, intensive technical assistance program, allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Second.
Okay, and a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? United States of all present. For the sake of the committee and for the counselors at home, if you're watching this, in the background information that was submitted by Katie, there is, there are three links that I went to, they're in blue on the backup package, and when you go to those links, they take you to cover pages, like I printed here, and they also go further. There's a lot more information on the second, third and fourth pages behind the way the links bring you, so that you can do a lot of research, maybe on Sunday after you're Maybe on Sunday after you've all come back from Thanksgiving dinners. So there is a lot of research there to be made and a lot of information to be gathered. But again, it's past four zero, so we'll see it on Monday night. Katie, we'll see you Monday night?
Yes.
Okay, it's going to be a short meeting Monday night. Agenda item number five. Just chased it all. Agenda item number five is adjourned?
So moved, second.
All those in favor, we are adjourned.